Okay, so five thirty time for meeting order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, does anybody have any items they'd like to have removed from the consent agenda? If you've got.
I'm anybody tonight, I don't need it.
All right. Any public comments at this point not pertaining to the noise resolution?
That would come up.
There's a special section for that. We do have some special activities tonight, and they consist of some oaths of office. And the first one is for Jonathan Neenauer. Jonathan, if you would come up to pose your case. I think you have a little cheat sheet there if you need it. And raise your right hand please, if you want to die, and state your name.
Jonathan Neenauer.
Do you solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as required?
As a firefighter or paramedic?
As required as firefighter or paramedic.
For Clear Creek Township, for Clear Creek Fire District, Warren County, Ohio?
For Clear Creek Township and Clear Creek Fire Department, Warren County, Ohio.
According to the law?
According to the law.
And the best of my ability?
And the best of my ability.
During continuance of my lawful appointment?
During continuance of my lawful appointment.
Congratulations. Thank you. Will you come up and take pictures? We'll take time, so you can get plenty of pictures. You want to take a picture? I'd say have you. All right, Jonathan, just stand right there, she's going to throw a bag, Jonathan. We do have two additional oaths of office, one for John Edelman, who are member, John, if you were to come on up. Full member of the zoning commissioners, Mike Smith. Mike wants to come on up, lead a full member also. Yeah, there you go. If you weren't ready to write in, you know, I can state your name.
Mike Smith, John Edelman.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as required?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties required.
As a full member of the zoning commission?
As a full member of the zoning commission.
Clear Creek Township?
Clear Creek Township.
To which office I have been appointed?
To which office I have been appointed.
According to the law and the best of my ability?
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Thank you, guys.
I think this is my twenty-fifth. So this will be thirty.
All right, the whole group here. No, you guys are in, there you go. That looks nice.
Thanks. All right.
Okay.
We now have, I'd be under special activities, we have public input on the proposed noise zoning resolution, resolution fifty-five seventy-nine. Jeffrey, you want to tell us about where we are on this?
Yeah, so kind of multiple public comment session for last public discussion, the request by four trustees was to alter the minimum decibel levels for the hours of seven to ten, seven AM to ten PM. As previously drafted, seven decibels, request put it to eighty-five decibels, and then to remove the exemption regarding the banking of, what were those names?
For garbage truck.
They gave them garbage truck, couldn't figure. So those were the two modifications since the last time that we had discussion. But there's individuals that are in audience that have probably things to comment for the discussion. There was also in your packet, individual had put forth a letter, Kyle, on hold on twenty-two.
Can you bring that nice thought out? Think you absolutely consider, I think, if not now, have any time. Okay, anybody like to come up and talk about the ask questions?
I just like to ask some questions, yeah.
Yeah, when you come up to.
My name is James Hard.
Yeah, then your address.
James Hard, eleven fifty September, Lawrence Court. They said between hours of seven AM and ten PM, is that correct?
Yeah, there's different time periods. Seven AM to ten period, and ten PM is one phase, the other phase then is from ten PM to seven AM. So there's an expectation that from seven AM to ten PM, the noise would not be greater than eighty-five decibels, and from ten to seven, it would be longer greater than fifty decibels.
Now, what about when farmers after planting fields and stuff like that, is that exempt also?
Agricultural equipment inactive use for that.
And they got people out there shooting off guns.
Guns are constitutionally protected.
Well, yeah, pistol laws.
It's constitutionally protected activity.
I mean, you can't shoot off guns in the city. They, the way we do that.
The city, and they have ordinance to do so.
But I think, what township has, what township has noise like that?
In the Ohio legislature. Its statute is totally prohibited.
Okay.
Right, like, shooting off guns in unincorporated capture.
I have to leave it on me, let's prepare it up for you, yeah? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? How are you doing?
I'm doing all right, my name's Tim Umpire, I live at thirty-eight twenty-eight, Washington, New York. I'm all right, chill. We've had Jeff down here at our place, I guess, approximately a month ago, it's like near Mars, but, you know, we're still, you know, having issues over this grinder that put it into part supply, which, you know, it came in measures that will, of course, at the time when he was down there, you know, they were, you know, ripping the little canvas curtain open, still feeding, you know, pallets into this, you know, grinder with articulating motors, but I think he took that shutdown, but hopefully that has been blown for a while, so, you know, that's going to help, I think, for that part of it, I think, you know, I don't know what you've done, but, you know, apparently they're slow down, but, you know, we're still not happy with it, it's still, you know, obnoxious, and, you know, I know that I realized we got the decibel level, but, you know, can we get something else done, such as, you know, your, some sort of sound barrier wall, or get this thing soundproofed, so it's not quite so obnoxious?
Well, that's a good question. You know, we've started this and put together the program, as you know, and we're looking at this if it's passed, and then at that point, it'll go into effect, and then, and we've done it so we can tweak it as we move along here, but I don't, I don't want to, personally, I don't want to keep pushing out, now, now, and not get anything started, so at least we have an ordinance, we have something that we can amend and adapt. That's my personal opinion, anyway. But so, and if we push it out again, to see if we can, I don't know anything about putting a wall up to, I know it works for sound, and so does mounting, it all helps, but I'd say we'll have to look at that, look down the road here a little bit, and see what else we can maybe come up with, because I appreciate your problem now.
And obviously, even the thing with him, I mean, it's the back there on the rear corner of that building, and the angle which it sits is, I mean, it's just like hanging, you know, and straight forth up, I mean, and unfortunately, how, how does it fare here?
I'm still sure we can send him a letter, help do it maybe?
I know Mr. Palmer's been in contact with him, already, as Mr. Mustard indicated, he's gotten some positive feedback already, and ratcheted down on activity, apparently. Barriers are a constitutional problem that I, that I really want to look at before the board imposes, or thinks about imposing literally sound barriers. That'd be a huge problem, in my view. But the other point is that, you know, and I know nobody likes to hear this, but the landowners do have private remedies to speak with private lawyers about nuisances, so in which case they have a much better and a much more targeted approach to be able to get some remedy there, so, you know, my suggestion too is that there's also be a private, consult a private lawyer and see what your options are there, I don't know what they are, but certainly that's an option. I know people don't like to hear that, but that can be a more targeted and a better option.
I would caution the industrial department, well, that was built, they put a mound, give a mound up, and it helps, it helps, so, there are maybe things that can be imposed privately too, that we may not be able to accomplish, so something else to think about.
I mean, when you say a mound, are you talking about, are you involved with putting a mound on this lot, or are you talking about the mannequins over on the end that act in a area?
Personally, I would say on that, but I think that's something to be, I couldn't, I couldn't talk to the legality of that, or if that could be done, on that, the fact that, in my situation, a mound was put in as part of the original to help, on their side, and puts it right up against the road, but that's, it still worked.
I'd like to say, I realize that there was a very intense moment, I think either seventeen or eighteen, and I never did hear nothing more about what was going on, and then, you know, in June of last year, the same happened again, and.
There we are.
I didn't know what we are, so, I mean, what happened behind the scene, what happened here, what happened among them down there, but, you know, I certainly got left out of the party.
Well, I don't know that there was any party to be had, it was all part of his business, and it was the same thing that he's been doing, or, or alternative to what he's been doing, but still fits into the business classification. He's loved him to do that, and he could do something else on the other, quite honestly.
I could say he was not having this problem until it's just happened, I mean, they attended the deal a little bit, running in early, but that's not happened since the thirty-two years we've been down there. I could say he acted like he was going to look into it, so, here we are, I could do a topic to you, so, if you'd like to do something else, you've seen it done with it, so, like say, you can sit on the patio, and drink, you know, a beverage, or eat your lunch, or sit there and talk on the phone, and you can do it when they're rolling a grinder. And usually, about seventy-five feet of fire line, it's a little bit close to that for what it is. Like I told Jeff, that thing, you know, it's something as long as, you know, C and D Mansfield, I'm here in the middle of an residence area. We're fans of gravel, so, whatever, I'm going to go to the, like I say, they're the ones importing all that stuff, isn't it, I mean, they didn't all went out there and pack it, you know, they chose to design it, and, you know, making all the racket with it. All right, so, this is where we're at, so, let's see where else we can go.
Something we'll keep our eye on is, see if we can come up with some idea of help to them, and see how they reasonably block it when you don't.
They're trying. And obviously, part of the discussion, you know, back in the last court case, was we could not have a outdoor grinder, that we won for the township, when they were out sort of, doing the grinding. What they've established this point is an indoor grinder, they have a canvas flap, curtain, so that, in theory, it's supposed to be shut while operating the grinder, but what we found when I was on site, functionally, they have it open while they're picking up material and putting it in there. So it was supposed to be a barrier to help with the noise, it's not functioning that way when it's open. So they need another employee to pull the curtain, do stuff, and have it go back and forth. So there's some things they can still do, and some like they're consistently doing, or maybe they're doing better based upon.
Yeah, the day you were there, like I say, you were standing there when I was with you, and say, Bart, where is, you hit that curtain open, he turned, he threw stuff up in there and crammed it in, and I say, hey, you're doing that on a regular basis, but since you've been down there, I'm not familiar with that, so, we've talked, we've kind of slowed down.
So there's some things going better in that regard, so, as we talked.
We'll keep talking to them.
Yeah, I mean, I had done an eighty-five decibel at their property line when I was on, this property was, the most I had was sixty-eight, so still, we talked about what previously, the seventy was below that threshold, still below the eighty-five threshold, that's currently in draft, that's the numbers that we're talking about, so.
While you were there, plus, you know, all of that grain back there just coming right straight from run, right along the property line, and it's like this, you know, and that neighbor's next door, sending it to the tower, you know, the point where you were there, you'd see where the lime spoon is, reeks, and the oil rolls over, and we think that ever since they put that in there, and then they opened that up, the circle in truck field, I say, every bit of that grain becomes straight back there, and it hasn't rolled right down along that property line, and hadn't done anything, or, you know, catch it, or, you know, retention, pacing, nothing, like I say, it was like, the wild west, or the, or, dealing with dirt, shoving gravel to it, and there's where the water rolls and falls.
All right, well, thank you for keeping, we'll keep our eye on it. Okay, how, thank you. Axon, is water a part of this process?
Well, they're using water for what they're doing is to drainage from the property.
And is it rerouted?
Well, I think probably better is that they not thought about how to route it properly. Probably better way to go.
One more thing, Jeff, I mean, that big pile of dirt they got there, that water used to come around them buildings, and to the Oakland National Watershed down there, but like I say, when they piled all that dirt, when they dug that out for those loading docks over the years, they just piled and piled and piled that stuff up there, I mean, that's not, you know, native to that lot, they just shoved all that excess pool, and everybody, but, yeah, they changed the water's way on that, out used the naturally shed.
Something else where it's going here?
Yeah, I think it's all water, it's new thing to be there, if this was something that just was new construction, we'd have all these certain things in place, and evolution of activity, and which is where we're at, so.
Okay. Jeff, do you have any comments or particular insights that you'd like to talk to us about, about resolution fifty-five seventy-seven?
Excuse me, do you mind if I speak?
No, oh, no, please, no.
Robin Murphy, one-one-five, that's, in their court. I'm just not really understanding what progress is made with the Hidden Valley Fruit Farm. Maybe somebody can explain, music's still loud, and you talked about decibels, but it's still loud, so what, what is different now than it was last year at this time?
Different from standpoint of this resolution, or activity that's going on the property?
The activity as far as the noise? I mean, you talk about decibels, but unless you have an example to show me, I'm not really sure what loud this is, or is there a cutoff when they can't play any more music at night? Because fifty decibels, to me, means I can probably still hear it, could they have a cutoff time for when they can't play any more music?
So as the current draft, ten o'clock would be the cutoff time to go from one reading to the other, so.
Right, but does that mean they can still play music, they just go over there and turn the knob down, is that what you're saying as far as?
Yes, in theory, they could play music twenty-four hours a day, if it was exceeding the decibel, then it would be in violation of the noise resolution as drafted.
But, you know, like most of us, you don't have a machine, and I should, now, from our ears, we can still hear it, and it's, I think, I'll tell you what really.
I don't think you're going to have a situation, or that we can put a situation in where they can't play music at all.
Well, the problem, the problem that all of us have in that area is, when we moved there, it was a totally different venue. I mean, it was, there was no music, there's a little fruit farm, you go in, you buy the raspberries, and the strawberries, and the blueberries, and it morphed into this, the production of bands at night, and.
We had a, we had a meeting with them last week, and part of the discussion that we had, trying to figure out, were they going to have their road improvement put in place, which is part of the condition use discussion of last year, and through that, they were talking about going to just an acoustic set as opposed to having an amplifier, so I don't know if that has occurred or not, but that was what the discussion was last.
The owners, as, as we're known through last year, sold, sold the entire property business. They're no longer involved. Randy and Robin Lane are no longer involved.
Oh, that's news to me.
It's news to a lot of people.
See, I'm, I'm, we're just like, like, I didn't even know I was meeting until like half an hour ago, so I'm totally unprepared to sit here and see, but I'm doing it anyway, so I'm sorry that I'm not really.
No, it's fine, I mean, to this point, though, I mean, this, this, this is something that I've mentioned a couple of times through this process, I lived next to a wedding venue. Before it was a wedding venue, it was on a hayride, so for six weekends a year, I knew what I had. It was traffic, it was noise, it was all these things.
Right.
Now, every weekend, from April till October, I don't know what I have, because I don't have their schedule, I don't know if it's a day wedding, or a night wedding, if it's a Friday, Saturday, or a Sunday, or all three, so my, my feedback is, in, anytime, no matter where we live, if there's something zoned next to us that's, that's a business, if you will, it can change, and in this case, it did. I feel like, personally, that it was better than it was, just based on the condition of the property of those things, it's morphing again, based on the feedback I received from their meeting, and the new owners have a different viewpoint of what they want to do with it. I can't speak to the detail, though, and I wasn't at the meeting, but one of the things I did hear is that they were going to go away from the band concept, to more of an acoustic type of music, which I would think is not going to be nearly as loud, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't guarantee that, but logically, that would tell me that that would be the case, so, and your specific concern and situation would think that the, the level of noise would be different.
Yeah, hold on to your hat now, because we sat here last fall, or whenever they, they were here, you know, bragging about how they were going to do this big business, and how wonderful it was, well, I guess it wasn't that wonderful if they told us, or maybe they saw it for their profit.
No, I think, I think it just evolved into a situation where they decided that they wanted to sell the business to the people that were interested in coming in as part of it, so.
Well, I don't know what to say now, it could go, it'd be worse.
I can't speak to that, all I know is I can tell you, I spoke with the lanes, and they told me they sold the business, so.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna, I don't know what else to say, like I said, I'm not, I'm not really prepared to speak on, now that I know that our new owners, I guess, are going to have to address decibels and things again, when they start playing their music, but like I said, it's, it's really not right for the neighbors, and I wish people would treat other people like they want to be treated. If we don't do that, I think we'd be okay, but unfortunately, not the way of the world. Thank, thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else? At this point, just moving in, we've got this motion to consider, and I'd like to just, with your, I think we need to have all three of us here to vote on this, I don't think this is something, this is taking, and Steve will be back in two weeks, I think this is important enough to have everybody's input, I'm not trying to delay anything any further, for anybody's sake, but I don't, I don't think this is a good idea to vote just two of us here. Yes, it's a quorum, but this is a very, very important issue, especially for people that live in an unincorporated area, I'd rather. I think we can move it back, two weeks.
Table, table?
I'd rather table it until our last meeting.
Okay, so you're moving to table fifty-five seventy-nine?
Yes, sir. If we, if, I mean, if we've arrived at eighty-five and fifty, and those numbers, to most people don't mean much of anything, I mean, it, it's, we've done exhaustive research at about ninety different levels as to what those numbers mean, you could buy a decibel meter for thirty bucks, and stand at the edge of your, your property and measure it, we've all, I think we all three have different opinions on what that means, I feel more for people in their situation, no offense to that, but they have a business that's next door to them that's god awfully, awfully loud. I have one that the speakers are literally aimed into my daughter's bedroom window, and I love my neighbors, and they're doing a wonderful business, but it's just a matter of different, people have different situations, so, more than I even knew, I didn't know about our trash truck issues that we have in the township, three forty-five in the morning, which I think you guys have on social reserve court, if I'm not mistaken.
We, they come at three o'clock, but I, I do that, and they're there for thirty seconds, and then they're gone.
Still people, I'm still, there's people that don't like that either, and I understand the reason for it, because it's safety with our buses and all those things, that we can't have them all in the same place at the same time, but there's a lot, a lot to consider here, on a lot of levels, so, if everybody's okay with it, don't mean to go off on a rant, but.
Well, we can, we could table it, you know, not that, not that anything will change when the third person gets here, particularly so far as voting on this issue, it may, but I don't know that, but we'll know in two weeks, and then, again, remember, that we will be able to continue to address this document and change it, that we can find something that will make it better.
Sure, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's important that we do that.
For sure.
And we'll keep busy working, and see what he can do with some of our businesses out there, and that has to be so aggravated, yeah? Okay, Jason has moved to table fifty-five seventy-nine.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
This has been Ted.
We do appreciate you all coming and speaking about to this issue, and continue to watch our website, there are things that have gone on there, and certainly welcome to come back in two weeks.
Thank you, thank you, Adam.
In the morning.
Yeah, it's my eight morning meeting.
Nine AM.
Nine AM on the twenty.
Four.
Eight.
Eight.
Yeah. I was going to say that's all. Two weeks, fourteen, fourteen. This month, it's evening.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Moving on to, out of special activities, on to fiscal business, Russ, we have a fiscal officer, very important.
Yes, I have two items for your, like, review, and voting for tonight, first is the quarterly transfer of funds from the general fund, the funds, the interest that are assigned to those funds, and, Rachel, you're on, action here tonight.
Anyway, any questions about fifty-five eighty, or Palan builder? Motion to approve fifty-five eighty and dispense with the second rate.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
And then the second resolution is a, one where we have to correct, in twenty-twenty-three, there was a mishap occasion, that deposit to the O P O went to, to a couple other funds, and so I need to correct that, and this is the best possible way to do that, around a little over five thousand dollars, so. Need your approval to do that, but the money's there, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's in, it's in the wrong pew. There you go.
Most of the people are in the.
I, I'm with you, we're with you, buddy. Yeah, that's all right. I'm, I'm, I'm in for anyone.
Before your time.
Oh, God.
Come on in, every guy.
No rest in.
I was going to tell him after.
I'll tell you what, I've had three audits this year, so, you know, and I'm still.
Don't use that word, I just take my taxes today.
Me too.
Okay, so motion to approve fifty-five eighty and dispense with the second rate.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Thanks, I'm out.
Mic drop.
Hello, guys. Okay, moving on to new business administration, uh, resolution fifty-five eighty-two. Resolution authorizing administrator to impetus or obligations greater than ten thousand dollars on behalf of, behalf of the dispense with the second, uh, reading and declaring an emergency.
We're gonna declare an emergency period in addition to authorize it to sign off on these documents. So this is new legislation that was just effective in early April, it's gonna allow us to, let's say, assess the. Good, actually, good.
Can we do that with two people?
Yeah, that's the only way you can do it, with two people. Just to declare that emergency period.
It's new legislation. It was just effective April four.
So unfortunately. Unfortunately, there were major problems with our, our big medics, um, cause that narrative's waking up in nine hours. Nothing says public emergency more than a life squad now working. That's why we bring the emergency and declare the emergency period to you for such time it takes for you to.
Now, we think it may be a good use of money and hopefully it'll keep us satisfied and, and.
Well, this is part of the, we've been taking so long to get the new medics in, we're having to keep our other ones a little longer than we originally projected. It used to take twelve months to get a new medic, not twenty-four to thirty-three. Yeah, the evolution of.
Hopefully we get part of it back when we go cycle out.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we saw.
There's a motion to approve fifty-five eighty-two, two, eighty-two, sorry. So move.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Anything under administration of this? Fire district have a recommendation to make conditional officer offers for probation employment to following personnel after post offer pre employment testing backgrounds. Chris clones is assistant fire chief and the annual salary of one twenty-seven. Andrew Durin, Durinak, he has fire fire paramedic step three, pay of twenty-seven eighty and out.
So Chris was, so we selected through our assistant chief process, twenty applicants apply, working through the process. I actually have known Chris for about thirty years. I worked with him at Mason Deerfield Joint Fire District and then he ended up getting hired with the city of Cincinnati where he spent about thirty years. So he's been on engine companies, truck companies, ambulance as part of special operations and heavy rescue, uh, lots and lots of experience. Did some years in the training bureau also, he's quite defined for us to have. Looking forward to him bringing a lot of his experiences to Clear Creek and he's really gonna hit it, hit hard with training. He's really excited, he, he's gonna retire from the city of Cincinnati and then we're gonna, you know, hire him to, to keep going. He says, uh, he's at the age now where he's kind of done doing the job, but he doesn't wanna retire and he, this is the perfect opportunity to give back to the younger generation, so he's really a perfect fit for local.
Nice, that's great. Okay. We also have.
You can't do the two together, just, just, uh, at the same place.
Uh, is there a motion to offer a probation employment to Christopher Cox? So move.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
And then for Andrew Durinak, uh, the pay, uh, offered a higher rate of pay of twenty-seven eighty-eight as a fire fire paramedic.
Yes, Andrew's relocating from Loudounville, which is up outside Canton area, I believe. And, uh, his, his girlfriend is a physician catering health, so he's sheath down here, happy working, so he decided to move down and looking to take that relationship to the next step. So we were able to grab, uh, grab one from out of the area and hire him as a lawyer entry as opposed to what we've been hiring recently with local people that were, seems like the fire departments are stealing from each other, different departments in the area. So he's relocating. So, yeah, he, uh, he applied for us Washington Township in Manu Valley. And, uh, through the interview process, he said that he thought Clear Creek and our culture fit his, what he was looking for with them.
Excellent, excellent. Is there a motion to hiring Andrew Durinak? So move. Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Okay. We also have a recommendation to accept a donation of five hundred dollars in memory of the audience Bernard and from the Bodaree.
She mentioned in her obituary that, uh, she would like, and blew a flower to make the nation, the, the third party.
Promotion to accept this donation. So move.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Anything else to do?
Just update on station twenty-four, uh, it's operating really well. Need a couple of little things to work out as far as like masks and stuff, but overall, uh, things are going well. We're really, really busy. I'm interested to see how our response time data comes out, you know, towards the end here once we get to four days one. But everything's working really well.
You know, when do you think you could sign it up?
Sirens for.
Or like the little off, uh, when you're making a, we're not on the trucks, but, um, will there be sirens?
We won't need to do that because of the way that we're alerted now with the new dispatching center yet, so we won't have any extra.
Everybody's been asking me if it comes in the office. Where are we in years of sirens?
You shouldn't unless there's an actual.
You're not gonna run across the party, are you?
Heard of them now. Okay, good. It'll be just like it is. Anything else? All right, Chief. Chief pardon? Have foundation to accept the donation of five hundred dollars to benefit Safety Hen?
Yeah, that's always managed to have a little donated five hundred dollars every year and we greatly appreciate that.
Happy to.
Appreciate his business stuff before we do that, so we thank him.
Definitely, so we're ready to accept five hundred dollars from, so just forward. So move. Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Claiming in Germany, just, in Germany, Germany. Root department, anything?
Nothing to say.
Is it drying out, any, any at all?
Yeah, we ditched five digits today. Five digits and did one yard job. I told them to slow down so we got something to do all week. I'm just kidding.
You just text yourself.
Luckily, they know better, so.
Oh, they do.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Concern agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent? So move.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Staff updates?
Um, just a couple of things, it's like, I assume you saw the flyer that Mike Stater gave me, uh, you know, the expo about the small business element trends for twenty twenty-four, they're in the report. We wanted to make sure that you got that and, uh, speaking of Pat Cole, you'll have the insurance on the next agenda as an emergency purchase because it's already effective April first, but that's not our fault. It's cause so karma didn't get our figures to us until the Friday before the first, which I think is like twenty-eight, twenty-nine. We'll make sure to get that on the agenda. And then the last thing is the Gulf Valley, um, we already changed, uh, and typically don't pay the township's force on Jason. He's had a little set thumbs up, he's had a little thumbs up, so we can work on that. We'll be working on that, just keep it on your radar, that's all I got. Okay. Anybody have anything else they'd like to say?
Just one thing, at that time of year, outdoor warning sirens, I've been getting a few calls saying, I can't, there was a tornado warning. I didn't hear the siren in my sleep and just reminded that this sirens exist for when you're outside. They're not intended to wake you up, so we recommend you get a weather radio for this kind of thing.
Do your toll phone.
Yeah, that's all right, in case anybody would say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so why should you, so move. Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?